All right, we are going to reconvene this meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. And as a reward for resilience and stoicism, we're going to go right back to call to the public because we have two of our speakers who, I hope you went and got something to eat at least. So let's, because in our original lineup, Mr. Ralston, you were number 14, and Mr. Barathan, you were number 19. So John Ralston, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me on the mic?
Are you on? Try it again. No. See, we thought the sheriff broke it earlier.
Lights on.
Okay.
Hello.
It's all you.
All right, thank you very much. Hello, my name is John Ralston, I reside in District 5. I'm here to speak about the land sale for Beal and to stop Project Blue. Even if the water, energy, jobs, tax revenue, environmental claims were true, and I don't believe that they are, I still wouldn't support Project Blue. In my opinion, data centers are the lichpin for what I see as dystopian developments that are on the horizon. If you're on the left side of the political aisle, we're seeing what I refer to as the Palestinian-ification of the American public. What is happening now in ICE, with ICE in our Hispanic communities, will expand to the general population. For those that are on the right side of the political aisle, we are seeing the development of what's known as a Chinese-style social credit system, due to the confluence of data center data, surveillance technology, and aspects of the Real ID Act, the Genius Act, and the Clarity Act. I know this sounds crazy, I know it's kind of cringe, forgive me, I left my tinfoil hat at home. However, I feel compelled to warn everyone about these things that are on the horizon that a data center like Project Blue will facilitate. At the last meeting before I ran out of time, I tried to make the analogy that this situation is like a giant Milgram experiment, M-I-L-G-R-A-M, people can look it up. It's an experiment that demonstrates that people will forsake their greatest higher moral, ethical beliefs and will inflict pain and harm on people. So I'm imploring the board to figuratively not press the button and inflict pain and punishment on the community for purported short-term gains. Please do not go forward with the land sale to Beal, and please stop Project Blue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston.
Good afternoon, hello again, nice to see you all. I spent most of my career bouncing back and forth between higher ed and nonprofits, mostly as a, in leadership roles as advisor and decision-maker, primarily having to do with technology. And so a lot of that was like talking to tech firms about their products and negotiating terms and contracts. And one thing I learned the hard way during that process was that, once you've talked to the sales team, there's going to be a big gap between what they promise and what the implementation team actually delivers. Y'all have been talking to the sales team from Beal, and from what we can gather, they've been telling you all the things you want to hear. And unless you get something in writing, and that was the lesson I learned the hard way, you know, they can tell you anything you want, but right now, there's nothing legally binding, right? Like Supervisor Heinz, as you pointed out in your quote to Luminary, I appreciated you saying that, what was it, your priority is to make the county has an agreement in place that will hold everyone to their commitments. And right now, the only agreement in place is the land sale, and we agree with that. Now, where we disagree is that we don't want this project to happen at all, right? Like, we know from the experience of neighbors in Phoenix and all over the country, wherever they put these hyper-scale data centers, whatever is stored in them, right, this is a hyperscale data center, and they have pushed energy costs up, they have drained water, and that's what they do. We know that, so like, we don't think that this is the right option. But we do really encourage you to get something legally binding in writing. Otherwise, there's going to be nothing enforceable when the inevitable happens, right? And everything that we say will happen, does happen, we'll be even worse off if we don't have something enforceable in place. And right now, we don't. I really appreciated hearing from union leaders who came through a couple weeks ago and really presented their case for why they wanted this project, right? Like, jobs closer to home, and jobs at all, right? And it's tough out there, I'm very sympathetic, I've had two union jobs myself, and they really changed my life, both in terms of the salaries that they offered, and also just really like instilling in me a sense of work-life balance. And I think that every worker deserves to be, to have a union job. What we want is for there to be local, well-paying union jobs in town that are sustainable and serve our community, right? We want to make sure that every worker in Tucson, in Pima County, is able to start a family, raise a family, and do so in an environment that's safe for their children and healthy for their children. And we want those children to be able to decide for themselves when they grow up, whether they choose to live here or move away, and this project will prevent that from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, because we had to really, not just bifurcate, but I think quadruficate, if that's a word, call to the public, I just wanted to see if there was anybody else in the audience that wanted to address the board. Yes? And you can just fill out a speaker card later, but you've got three minutes. Oh, you did? And tell us your name, sir?
Joseph LaSalvia.
Okay, all right, yeah, I remember Mr. LaSalvia's card.
All right, good afternoon now. My name is Joe LaSalvia, I'm a resident of Pima County District 2. I'm here to address my concerns with the Pima Animal Care Center's inability to care for the animals in our county. PAC's mission statement is to provide timely service to residents and compassionate care to animals while working to support public safety and educate the community about responsible pet ownership. In these goals, PAC continues to fail. If we can get the documents on the screen, please. Do you have the documents camera, if at all possible? All right, well, we'll push forward. So we can take the example of Dwight Irwin, whose pet dog Jack was mauled and killed by a neighbor's loose dog earlier this year. Despite multiple preceding animal citations, to this day, no definitive action has been taken by PAC to address the irresponsible owners or their violent animals. If they will do that to a dog, it's only a matter of time before they tear out the throat to the kindergartner. Speaking of human fatalities, what about the case of Tina Wager, who was mauled and killed earlier this year by a foster dog from PAC? When there are over 500 other dogs waiting on foster care, why was one with a known history of violence and aggression permitted to enter the foster system? That wasn't an accident, that was negligence. Or shall we speak of my own neighbors, who have perpetrated a 20-year history of bites from their unvaccinated dogs, for which they have not paid a single fine? Last year, I had the pleasure of witnessing their dogs eat each other alive. This and a series of related incidents was reported to PAC, in fact, to the director, Steve Kozicik, but no action was taken. As you can see, there is still much work to be done. As it stands, PAC's flaccid ineffective enforcement only enables animal abuse and problematic owners. That is why I started this petition. Calling for timely and substantive enforcement, and to demand a full accounting of PAC's civil complaints process and their $5 million annual budget. Not sure where that's going, but I'm paying for it, and I know I'm not alone when I say I don't feel like I'm getting any services in return. Unfortunately, this petition was ignored by Supervisor Heinz. Administrator Lesher assured me that she had, quote, "asked for additional information from staff in order to fully understand the concerns you raise." I attempted to follow up a month later on this information gathering and was met with silence. For the sake of humankind and canongind, I urge the leadership of this county, Supervisor Heinz and Administrator Lesher, to reconsider the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaSalvia. Was there anybody else present who wished to address the board before I close call to the public? All right, then I'm going to close call to the public and ask my colleagues if they want to respond to any criticisms, ask the staff to follow up with any additional information or action, or put something on a future agenda. Supervisor Con.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I received information from the clerk in reference to a constituent who came, spoke of her experience living in the Salvation Army house. If the clerk can please provide that information to the county administrators so that we can make a phone call and see if our community workforce development team might be able to support any wraparound services, including transition to permanent housing, that would greatly be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Anybody else? All right, I would like to ask if we could have staff from either county administration or the county attorney's office follow up with Mr. Rist, who was one of our first speakers earlier today. Just with regard to his specific concerns. Thank you. I had a question with regard to item number nine that I would pose to either the county administrator or whoever she wants to designate to respond. This was a hearing on a zoning code text amendment. I was told that we had one remote speaker. Are they still on the line?
Chair Scott, no, he's disconnected.
Okay. And I also understood that we had in-person speakers, and then I think there was somebody in the, I think somebody filled out a green card who should have filled out a yellow. I think they had the same last name as the person who wanted to speak. So my question is, would it be problematic to continue this item to the next board meeting? Or is it something that has to be acted upon by the board at this meeting? Because it did seem to be one where we had some, some community members who wanted to offer input.
Mr. Chair, board members, we do need to have it adopted 30 days prior to January 1st. I think the next hearing is December 2nd, that would put us right at the 30 days. So, doing my math, I think that would probably work.
All right. Then I'd like to move that we continue item number nine to the December 2nd meeting. Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is continued by a vote of 5-0. And then, on the consent calendar, we had some items that Supervisor Christie asked that we consider separately. Could I ask the clerk to read which items were removed from consent?
Chair Scott, it was items number 1, 10, and 12. But at the beginning, but I also wanted to let you guys know at the beginning, when I did the agenda adjustments, number one was removed from the agenda.
Okay.
By staff.
All right. So one was pulled from the agenda during agenda adjustments.
Yes.
So we're really only looking at 10 and 12?
Yes.
Okay, I would move both those items. Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Quickly, number 12. Can we get a quick explanation how these efforts coordinate with the Office of Emergency Management? And who's, who's the lead? And where's the division between OEM and public health?
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. For additional clarity, Deputy County Administrator Holmes to explain that one.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, although there's coordination with the two, with this particular grant, the, the Health Department takes the lead for health emergency purposes. So for example, on this grant, this is a continuation grant from '21 through '26, is the fifth year. It funds like four, four full-time staff members. It covers expenses such as a one-time acquisition of a deployable shelter, training platforms. This is in the event of a health emergency, although there's coordination in this event. On those events, this is real unique to a health emergency.
So it will be abundantly clear which is a health emergency and which is a non-health emergency?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, yes, that's correct.
And who makes that determination?
Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, I think for any kind of emergency, that would be done with a county administrator, working with, with us as deputies to kind of make that determination for something this big. Although the, the Health Department has a lead in the grant, declaring these types of emergencies will be at the purview of the county administrator.
Thank you very much, and I call the question. All right. Anybody object to that? All right. All those in favor of approving those two items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items pass unanimously. Item number 14 is our monthly opportunity for anybody on the board to give us an update on their membership on other boards, committees, and commissions, or their work with other municipalities.
Mr. Chair, I don't think our board members have been doing anything the last month, so there's probably no need for report.
Yes. Yes. All right, Supervisor Allen.
So the Arizona Border Counties Coalition meeting was postponed, so that, did not meet, but the Board of Health did meet at the end of last month. Dr. Smith gave a, gives a periodic report to the Board of Health from PAC. There was a recent Friends of PAC Community Clinic that opened up on First Avenue. Also, the soon-to-open Eastside Adoption Center. And then there was also a call out for volunteers, as always being needed at PAC. There was a continued, a continuation of the discussion about the Health Department's role in conducting a public health assessment related to our new due diligence process, related to data centers, high water and energy users. And there, as part of that discussion, there was a motion that was made that passed to advise the Board of Supervisors to apply the due diligence process and policy retroactively so that it will encompass Project Blue before, before the county closes on the land sale. And so I think there should be something on our inboxes about that soon. We also heard a report from Mr. Marcelino Flores, as the tribal liaison, and heard concerns about the New World Screwworm, which is currently spreading in Mexico, making its way north, which affects mostly livestock and other animals, but occasionally humans as well. That's the report from the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Can I indulge the board for just a moment? I think, looking back on the consent agenda on items 10 and...
12.
I voted, I misvoted.
Oh. Sir, you want to ask for reconsideration for both of those?
Either that, or can I just change my vote?
Mr. Brown.
Chair Brown.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, so you're, you're making a motion to reconsider.
So moved.
All right, moved and seconded by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion on reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now I'll move approval of those items, and I can't remember. You were my second, actually, I think. All right, thank you, Supervisor Heinz. All right, all those in favor of those two items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So those items did pass, but the vote should be changed to 4 to 1. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
You bet. I'm, I'm, I know that we have Mr. Cuaron here, and, and Ms. Pereira is also here. I'm going to move through some of these other items, because they should be, they should be really quick, and then we'll get to your update. And then, Ms. Pereira, if anybody has questions on the four detainee in crisis systems items, you're here to answer those. Item 17 and 18, I will move approval of both those items under Development Services.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items pass unanimously. Under real property, oh, wait, I'm sorry, under finance and risk management, was informed by our counsel, Mr. Brown, that it would be, behoove the board to continue item number 21. So I'm going to make that motion to continue item 21. Would that be until December 2nd? All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. And, Mr. Brown, if you could just share with the board why you recommend continuance of that item.
Chair Scott, members of the board, we need to do some additional, have additional discussions. I met the attorney who's working on this for Aho, just about the way and the process for appointing these board of directors, given the, given the circum, the unusual circumstance.
All those in favor of continuance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that item is continued until December 2nd by unanimous vote of the board. Under real property, I would move approval of resolution number 2025-54, resolution number 2025-55, and also item number 24.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to come back to the regular agenda. There's a couple of quick things on the addendum. Supervisor Christie, you added addendum item number two, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have, have had increasingly amount of concern expressed to us by what we would consider vulnerable populations, particularly in the Green Valley area, about folks who have worked all their lives and have saved their money and paid their mortgages and own their homes free and clear, only to have them subject to title fraud. And there's been several instances where title fraud has indeed taken place, and these folks are in a world of hurt. One of the things that we found that was really troubling was you can, you can access through the assessor's office, a program that will warn you if there is title fraud, but the problem is, it tells you after it's already happened. So clearly, there needs to be more aggressive legislation to address this very significant problem. And it's a horrible thing to go through. And there was one up in the Scottsdale area that they, they highlighted about people forging signatures, and, and I think one of the issues is with, not only with the assessor, that can't access that information in a timely manner to the owners of the home, but also the recorder, because they kind of work hand in hand. So without overdoing the situation, I think everybody can grasp it, I would like to request that our legislative agenda include what it states in the, in the item, to explore the need for legislative action to reduce the threat to vulnerable populations posed by home title theft, and to direct our Pima County lobbyists to work with state legislatures to effect same. I think all of our districts have that same vulnerable population, so that would be my motion.
I'll second that. And Ms. Lesher, shortly after I became the chair of the board, I participated in a meeting with you and the county assessor, the county recorder. Mr. Brown, were you at that meeting as well? Yes. Because that was an issue that both of them were very concerned about. And if I remember, the, either the Maricopa County, I think it was the Maricopa County assessor was holding a large meeting with officials from around the state. We asked for some information from the County Supervisors Association about how this was being addressed. So I'm going to second Supervisor Christie's item, but also would appreciate it if we could get some updates from the assessor and the recorder and, and Mr. Brown, if there are any from your office to, to share with the board, because this was, months ago, this came up.
Mr. Chair, just as a side, Assessor Drouby has been very proactive in this issue. She's holding seminars on this very same subject down in, in our area in Green Valley. And quite honestly, and quite understandably, the community is very concerned about this happening. And it's, it's, I think, a very important thing that we as a board need to follow up on, and especially with our legislative lobbyists. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or, or discussion? Supervisor Conno.
Thank you. Supervisor Christie, have you talked to the city of Tucson about? No, I'm kidding. I want to thank my colleague from District 4 for bringing this very important issue to the board's consideration. I was not aware that this was taking place of, in our community. It is certainly an abuse of power by people who do not deserve our praise or attention. And we've got to support our most vulnerable, our seniors especially. And so I look forward to this being added to our legislative priority for the incoming legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. Under, also on the addendum, I would move items eight and nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. The only thing I would say is that the, there were references made to item number eight during our joint meeting with the city. Supervisor Conno.
Thank you, Chair Scott. And as a follow-up, this is our first commitment post-adoption of the One Pima Plan with item number eight.
Thank you. Supervisor Allen.
You know, I, I think being one of the first items that we adopt that, out of the, kind of the process that the Regional Opioid Settlement Advisory Committee has put together, I just want to extend a lot of gratitude to all of the folks who have served on that advisory committee and mapped out a process that has been incredibly thoughtful and researched. And so anyway, congratulations to all of them for being able to get one of their items across the finish line. And I look forward to hearing about what some of the other recommendations are for the other, for the other pots of money in RFPs.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. All those in favor of those two items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both those items pass unanimously. Let's go back to the regular agenda and items 25, 26, 27, and 28. These are all under detainee and, and crisis systems. They all have to do with inpatient court-ordered evaluation services. And because there was a lot of discussion about these kinds of services in the joint meeting today and, and other, other settings, I'll confess something to you, Ms. Pereira. These were originally on the consent agenda, and I asked that they be moved to the regular agenda, because I thought that board members might have questions, or you might have additional information for us. To start off any discussion the board may want to have, I will move items 25, 26, 27, and 28.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Ms. Pereira, any information specific to these four items that you wanted to share with the board before I asked if the board had any questions or concerns to raise?
Not really. These, can you hear me?
Yes.
These contracts have been in place since time immemorial. We go out every five years for an RFP. What you have in front of you today is the last one-year extension from our last RFP. We did a three-year initial term with two one-year renewals. So this is the last renewal for this contract. We will be going back out for RFP rough...
Now the microphone's kind of going out. Questions or comments from board members? The only question I have is, why do we have four different contracts? That's more of a layperson's question.
Sure, of course. So, Pima County has a limited number of bed capacity. Is it not working?
You might have to share one.
There we go.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Pima County has a limited number of psychiatric inpatient beds. And in order to provide court-ordered evaluation services, you have to be specifically licensed to provide that service. So you can't go to, say, for example, Oro Valley Hospital and, and get these services. So we contract with all, all providers who are appropriately licensed and willing to provide these court-ordered evaluation services. And they are different dollar values, because each of the facilities has different patient volumes. So Banner and Sonora are going to, they see the majority of the, of the COE patients, whereas Pallaverdy and Connections see fewer, so their dollar values are, are smaller. So in addition to these four, we also provide court-ordered evaluation services in the jail, but we don't need a contract for that, because it's wrapped into the NAFCARE contract.
Thank you for that. And, and Mr. Holmes, if I could prevail upon you, could you reiterate some of the points you made with regard to our, and feel free to weigh in as well, Ms. Pereira, as far as our statutory obligations in this area? What, what is and what is not, what is and what are not our obligations in this area?
Sure. Chair Scott, I'd be happy to do so, although I've learned everything I know from Ms. Pereira. So I'll just repeat, and she can add. But basically, what I had, had definitely put out there was that our only statutory obligation in this behavioral health space is the court order valuation that, or which represent the contracts you are approving today. We own the CRC as a building, but we're merely the landlords. We subcontract that out. And just, just because there's, there was some confusion whether we had some other statutory obligations for behavioral health in that space. And what I just named is really all of our statutory requirements currently.
Excuse me, Chair Scott, members of the board. I add a caveat to that, in that the county is statutorily required to provide the services of a screening agency and evaluation agencies. We satisfy our obligation to provide the services of a screening agency by sending money up to Access, who then in turn contracts with the REBA, which is Arizona Complete Health, who in turn contracts with CBI, who provides the screening agency services. And the evaluation services are separate. The screening agency services are kind of the prelude to the court-ordered evaluation. That's where people go out in the field to determine whether the allegations contained in the application have any merit whatsoever. And if they believe that they do, then a patient would be transported to the hospital.
One other question is that, Ms. Pereira, you said these contracts have been in place since time immemorial, I think. How do we evaluate the, whether the contractual obligation... since time immemorial, I think. How do we evaluate whether the contractual obligations are being met?
Chair Scott and members of the Board, our contracts are written such that we have performance requirements and we have reporting requirements, and the way that we pay claims is that each of the hospitals has to provide us with a face sheet. They have to get prior authorization, that we agree to pay for a certain number of days of stay, and we require, just like any other insurance company, that before we pay a claim, the hospitals have to submit appropriate documentation justifying the bill that they're sending to us, outlining exactly which services they've provided.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate you coming down here, especially since it's probably my fault that you had to.
No worries.
Any other questions or comments from Board members? All in favor of approving those four items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are approved unanimously. Mr. Caron, we don't have an award for you, except our thanks that you allowed us to make the monthly financial update our final item on the regular agenda. The only thing that we have after this is to go into executive session, as is noted on the addendum, and Mr. Brown asked if we could do that at 4, but we might be able to do it sooner than that, or is that going to be problematic?
Like a name in recess to 3:50.
Okay, well, or Mr. Caron can talk really slowly.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, and I was just going to, previously, we had asked and talked with the Board about moving the monthly reports to the first meeting of each month rather than the second.
Right.
But we had it agendized today, so you're here today, but starting in December, it will be regularly on the agenda at the first meeting of each month. Just if you wonder why you're getting it twice.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Administrator Lesher, for that intro. Chair Scott, members of the Board, I'll talk as long or as short as you guys all need me to do talk. As Ms. Lesher just indicated, and you can change the slide, please. Today's presentation's going to look a little different than what we have in the past, simply because the timing of the presentation in conjunction with the timeline change that Ms. Lesher just made announcement to is the reason why we don't have the forecast ready for today's meeting. I do have some financial information to present. I did want to spend a little bit of time talking about the timeline change in terms of why we're moving it up to the first meeting of each month as opposed to the second meeting of each month. We feel that this is, the timeline will reduce the lag time in the reporting of actuals. I think it's going to be closer to the end of our closed process, which is going to improve the timeliness of the financial reporting that we're giving you. It's more of an operational alignment with our month-end closed processes that allows for my team to go out and talk with the departments to get a more thorough analysis of what their budgets are doing from month to month, and I think it aligns with the Board's strategic oversight in terms of the ability to manage on a month-to-month basis the fiscal performance of the county. So, those are the reasons behind the timeline change, and as Ms. Lesher just indicated, we will be coming back to you at the next meeting, the first meeting in December, with a full financial forecast that will be based upon October's actuals, but will be forecasting through November. So, with that, you can change the slide, please. This is just an overview. This is the slide from our September forecast. I just put it up here as a reminder as to where we were as of September. Just one thing to note, the variance in the upper right-hand column of 8.3, that is the number that was based, that the short-term funding was based upon earlier. I want to point to the $101.4 million projected ending fund balance as of the end of September, because it'll be an important number at a slide in a couple slides. Next slide, please. So, we do have some, an October update. It's not a forecast, per se. It's more of where we are through October comparatively to where we were in October of last year. You can see that our fund balance was higher last year. That's based upon largely how we ended last fiscal year compared to how we're projecting we're going to end fiscal '25, so $5 million variance there. As you might expect, our revenues are up largely due to the state cost shift increase that the Board approved during the '25, '26 budget cycle. Our transfers in are up. That's really due to transferring in of Pago. That was adopted in the '26 budget cycle as well. And then our expenditures are up, resulting from the supplemental increases that were approved, as well as the first tranche of the total 5% pay increases that were authorized. We've paid out 3.6 with the next 1.4 coming in January. So, that's really just a high-level overview of how we're tracking through October of this year compared to October of last year. Again, I'll be bringing back a full forecast for you on December 2nd. Next slide, please. This slide is a reconciliation based upon that September forecast. I thought it would be important to show the impact of the $838,000 here. Again, that $101.4 million number that I talked about a couple slides ago is represented here, again, as of September. If you reduce the $838,000 that was approved by the Board of Supervisors earlier today, that brings that down to 100.5. If you take out the required general fund reserve of $92 million this year, it brings that number down to 8.5. Again, I expect these numbers to change based upon the forecast through October, but if we take that based upon the September forecast, this is where we would be. I also want to point out that at the bottom part of the screen there, it also does grow the deficit from the fund balance perspective when looking at '26, '27 to 2.8 million. That's, again, that's based upon our actuals from '25, which we are finalizing, and I expect to have those at the end of December. Next slide, please. This is the same slide. We haven't had any use of general fund contingency, so we still have $894,000 available for this year from our budgeted $1 million contingency. Next slide, please. This is maybe of interest to the Board. You should have all received the memo, the Budget Guidelines and Process Memo for '26, '27. It's hard for me to believe that we're already, we just put that to bed, and we're already talking about '26, '27. But this, a couple highlights here that I want to point out. The budget opens on November 24th for all departments, so you can start to get into adaptive and begin entering your budgets on November 24th. All of the budgets, grant, CIP, and operating budgets are due on January 16th. We do plan on coming to the Board with a strategic plan overview and a budget study session on February 17th. Capital improvements will be reviewed on March 17th. We're scheduled to have the recommended budget delivered on April 17th with tentative adoption in May and final adoption on June 19th, with the tax levy being held on August 17th in concert with required state statutes. So, that concludes my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Supervisor Conno?
Thank you, Chair Scott. Director Caron, I appreciate the update on our financial progress. I want to reiterate the District 5's opinion on a couple of issues, and obviously, I've talked with Administrator Lesher about this as well. I am hopeful that in the budget process, we think broadly about the ways that we can have meaningful impact for all of our departments. I am encouraged by recent memorandum communicating additional employee benefits that will be critical for our 7,000 employees, including childcare. Thank you for deeply, for looking into those conversations and ensuring that our employees are at the top of our list as we make budget recommendations. I want to reiterate the District 5 Office's belief that our economic development team is understaffed, and we need to ensure that we have at least three more positions in the Economic Development Office in the coming year to match, and in fact, we'd still be behind the city's total FTEs in the Economic Development Team. I also want to ensure that the budget recommendations that you receive from the Library District are representative of the increasing need for us to handle librarian shortages, and also to ensure that our libraries are receiving the support that they need. I believe we, my estimates are that we're anywhere between three and five years behind in our Library District, and the way I know these things go is you have the departments come with a plan that is essentially maintaining a status quo and not looking for additional investment. I encourage the administration and our Director of Finance to work with our departments, to ask what additional resources they need from this Board as we navigate those. I don't want us to put Band-Aids on top of really important, critical conversations that are happening right now about need in our community, and specifically about how these departments, from Economic Development to Libraries, to our economic, the employee classification and compensation discussions. I just want to reiterate that in this financial update. So, thank you, Chair Scott, for the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions or comments from Board members? All right. Mr. Caron, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all.
There being no other item other than executive session, I'm going to move that the Board go into executive session.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Allen. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are in exec, and when we come out, it'll just be to, come back out, it'll just be to adjourn the meeting. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We are in exec and when we come out it will just be to, come back out it'll just be to adjourn the meeting.
All set? All right. All right, we are out of executive session. There being no further business before this board, going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.